Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Paulette O'Fry is here. Scott Latham?
Here.
Tom Grattan?
Here.
Tom Kennedy?
Here.
Brian Tobin?
Here.
In the event of an emergency, all visitors are advised that they may exit the building from the one side door which leads directly into the apartment. In the event of an emergency, everyone is asked to move away from the building and do not attempt to leave in your automobiles since this may cause traffic problems and blocking any emergency vehicles.
Thank you, Patty. This is your meeting, so have at it.
Chuck, you're up.
Wow. There you go, Chuck.
How did Chuck go for this? Oh, just word overview?
Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to our second budget presentation for the 2025-26 school year. Tonight, it's our pleasure to have the administrators give a more detailed description on their parts of the budget. Again, I mentioned we were still waiting for some, just to kind of quick recap, we're waiting for some, still waiting for final numbers for the state aid. I think I heard good things. Seems like it's gonna, you know, hopefully come out with a little higher amounts than what we thought. But again, tonight, we're gonna go through each section. And without further ado, first up is Mr. Drogon from facilities.
Oh, we're really gonna do that?
Yes.
Okay, so I have two appropriations and combined increase is about 2.32% over last year's budget. The, primarily, the, I'll go back, primarily the increased costs is materials and supplies. Everything is going up. Utility, well, fuel, oil, material, it's, nothing goes down, so. So we have, we put money into a, transferred to capital account to do some improvements throughout the years, right, throughout the year. So we expect to do some HVAC improvements next year, continue on with our security upgrades, continue flooring, roof, some window, you know, we have the window repairs that we're gonna be undertaking. Hopefully shortly, that may carry into next fiscal year. And the district is also looking to, to purchase a bus to, to replace aging fleet, one of the minibuses. Some recent progress, projects that are in progress, we are replacing four boilers, two in the elementary and two in the high school. There's a picture of one of the new boilers in the high school. It's up and running, complete. The other, the, the high school, the second boiler is, I want to say 95% complete. Just a few little things here and there, we probably should have that up and running within a week or two. And, oh, let me go back. In the elementary school, we have one new boiler up and running. The second boiler, they took the, they removed last week, over the last week or so. All the material for the new boiler is down in the basement, in the boiler room, and they're gonna start constructing that within the next, you know, tomorrow, right? They just started pulling stuff out. So over the next couple of days, they'll get started with the new boiler in the elementary school, the second new boiler. Some of the projects that we did, this is the, the new pickleball court, we redid the outdoor basketball court and created two new pickleball courts within the, the full court portion of the, of the paved area. And then we also redid the other half court in the back over there. There's the, I believe this is the bus that we need to replace. Although it looks like it's in good shape, unfortunately, it doesn't pass inspection, DOT inspections are, well, they're a little more aggressive than, like, if you bring your car to an auto motor shop. So this one has some rust in it and it won't, I don't think it passes the inspection portion of it. All right, that's, anyone have any questions on facilities?
The bus, are we gonna be forced to buy an electric one?
I don't believe so.
No, we're not required to now. Because we're looking at a minibus, we're all looking for most likely a gas bus. We're getting prices now. And again, this will be used for various types of transportation. But like I said, we, without the infrastructure set up, really didn't think, we definitely considered it, but I think right now that it was just...
Well, I'm not, I'm not thinking about willingly doing it. That legislation has been installed for a little bit.
Raises the price, whatever the percentage is for the infrastructure, like you said.
They have a cutoff. If we do this next year or after, as of right now, you have to buy electric. The problem is, they've done studies all over New York State, including Long Island. The Superintendents Association has done it, a number of places have done it, and there is no infrastructure for it right now. PSE and G has been noncommittal in whether they can get the electricity out here. You reached out to the Mandate, I reached out to them. Sunrise has been noncommittal in whether they're gonna stay open. And there are a couple of smaller bus companies on the South Fork that have said point blank, as the superintendent told me. When we're required to go to all electric buses, we're coming closer. So I don't know if it will stay in place, but there is a mandate, I don't know off the top of my head exactly what the date is, but there is a mandate where after that, after that date, we have to buy electric, you don't have a choice. You know, I don't recall the exact, you remember the exact date?
No, I know it's a couple of years away.
I thought it was in '27, but there's also talk that that's gonna get moved again or, you know, just on a, put it on a hiatus.
The governor has privately hinted at the fact that she will move it because we're just not prepared right now to do it in New York State. There's not electricity, you know, it's in the same year where we're requiring air conditioning, it's in the same year where, like, you know, all of this stuff is requiring more electricity that we don't have. So they've, she's hinted at it, but it didn't come out in her budget this year, which was odd.
There's still time, though.
As long as we're not gonna...
There's still time, her budget's not done yet. It could come out between now and April or something.
They can add it in the legislative proportions of the budget, or she could always add it, again, in her budget at the next door round, you know. I don't think, because the cutoff is not the end of this year, I don't think it's a priority. I would say our biggest issue is getting drivers right now. You know, so, you know, buying new buses is less than a problem for us. We have, we have another driver, we have a driver that retired last year, we have another driver retiring this year. You know, there is legislation out there that has been supported by the Superintendents Association, Transportation Workers Association, to try and make it easier to get a bus driver's license, you know. They're trying to allow off-site exams at some of these training sites, which they do for certain licenses, but as of right now, they don't for bus driving licenses. So I got the briefing on the legislation about two weeks ago, they're trying to get that through this year, too, because that is even more of a problem than actually buying buses. You know, we could buy buses, but we don't really have anybody driving right now, no. And, I mean, you know, our bus drivers are coming back and helping us part-time, we're in their 60s and 70s, so they're not going to be driving that long, so.
Just as long as we can make the investment and it's not gonna be yanked out for any year.
I just wanted, on your possible '25, '26 projects, in order to get all of those done, I mean, we have a very healthy repair reserve. I would think some of these projects would be applicable for...
Yeah, there's multiple funding sources to help if we need it, yeah, absolutely.
I mean, that's what we have it for.
Yep, absolutely. And we, and quite honestly, if we would do everything on there, we would need to go into the repair reserve.
Yeah, that's what I would think. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Mine is shorter than Anthony's, so my budget's remaining relatively flat. All, everything is being maintained, I have a decrease, I get applause for that, of 5.34% and it's really just from less equipment that I put in the budget because we've been buying furniture the last number of years. And we purchased our new math, like, the big chunk last year, so this year is just the replenishing. So that's really, nothing is being taken out of the budget.
It doesn't have to do with the fewer students in the elementary school?
Uh, maybe, a few less textbooks, but I wouldn't say textbooks are a huge, no.
In the last couple of years, we've bought in a couple of textbooks, so when you're buying in, you have to up your budget for that, so it's just not up from your typical budget. So then the next year, it gets to come down. You know, you don't buy them every year, you buy workbooks and the ancillary support material that goes along with it. So there's still things that stay in it, but like, you may buy in, remember when I was a sixth grade lead, I bought in $13,000 worth of textbooks every five years. My budget had to go up 13 grand every four or five years, and it's probably a lot more than that now because some of them...
Yeah, it was close to, it was in the twenties.
So that, that was really major decreases was the fact that we had bought in a couple of different, you know, math readings, some different serieses that we're using throughout our school that fit very well with now the new requirements. So it's worked well, we purchased them, they're not necessary to purchase every year.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else?
You wanted to point out that his decrease wasn't as great, did you?
No, it wasn't.
Yeah, I mean, but mine's better. Good evening, everyone. So much like, you know, Mrs. Zonia, I, I too have a decrease in our budget. We are able to maintain all of our budget codes, our current programs and offerings. You know, we've, we've been very strongly supporting our student voice and current trends when we look at the courses that we offer, whether it be content areas or electives, clubs or activities. We speak to our guidance counselors, our parents, our students, colleges to look at what kind of courses do the universities want to see on their transcripts. We also speak to our technology teachers to see what kind of courses that we are able to provide that might help students moving into the trades and to the workforce. So with that 3.11% decrease, we are still hoping to be able to offer these new courses for next year, which would be AP Statistics, which would be a college-level course for 10th grade. So that would be the first course, second course would be in English 11, AP Lang, 12th grade would be AP Literature. We're looking at now bringing computer science with AI to the secondary level. We've been very successful and happy with having coding and game design at the middle school level, so now that same teacher, we're hoping that we can transition those students from that coding aspect into the secondary world of computer science with AI. We want to use AI, right? Everyone else is using it, we want our students to be able to use it in a responsible way. We're also in the future looking to have that computer science also aligned with a college/university for college credit for those students that decide, or align it with the college board. Welding and machine fabrication, we go back seven years ago, Molly Tuthill, welding with the mask on, and this is one course that we try to offer, and it is very dependent upon the number of students that we can enroll. It is an elective, and our students love, love, love our technology electives, and so we're, again, gonna try that. Mr. Woznowski, Mr. Fister are expert recruiters for their courses, so we're very hopeful that we'll be able to run that course. And abnormal psychology, we currently run two sections of psychology as an elective with Dr. Santiago, probably our two most popular electives with students, which is incredible. So adding the second level of that course was almost a no-brainer. That was a abnormal psychology joke. So that's what we're looking at. And that first bullet there, Ashoken, we were able to provide a field trip for outdoor education for our middle school students this year, which we haven't done since prior to COVID, I believe my second year here. And it's just a wonderful experience, the district supported it, so that was a great place for the students. They weren't allowed to bring their phones, they weren't allowed to bring their cameras. Every kid coming off the bus were exhausted. Did you have fun? Yes, so much fun, but it's a wonderful experience, so thank the district for me, it'll help support that as well. But again, overall budget decrease of, sorry, yeah, decrease of 3.11%. Any questions? Of course.
You'd be disappointed if I didn't ask a question. The welding and the machine fabrication, because you know I'm really big on the trades and those skills, if we don't have enough students, can we reach out to Greenport to see if, that we can fit that? Because you know I'm not gonna let that go, we need to start sharing.
Absolutely.
And this might be an opportunity, if we only have a handful of kids, to run a course if they have kids interested, so.
Yeah, absolutely, and that's something Dr. Morrow's been talking about with me as well, and as well as other superintendents, and how we could share some of the courses that we have with our neighboring districts as well.
And we have that great shop there.
Yeah, it is, it's wonderful.
Well, because there's just so much to...
Shop, yeah. Underscores its value, but, you know, there's a CNC machine in there, there's Laguna laser machine in there, 3D printers, it's really incredible, it was a...
Go in there when robotics is in there and you're just blown away for...
Yeah, they're in there right now.
What they're doing. I do, I just want to point out a little old timer thing, I guess it is. Back when the dinosaurs were roaming and I attended school here, we had outdoor education as a course in place of physical education. I don't know if those kinds of things can be done any longer, but we rappelled off this building, we biked to Chaplain, or like, final was biking 10 miles, we ran, and you know, it was, we went out in the fields to learn how to use a compass, and like you say...
Orienting, right, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know if that's an option any longer.
Always an option, you know.
It was, and we didn't, our phys, I think it was probably just open to seniors, if I recall, but it was in lieu of physical education, which, by, by the time the seniors get into phys ed, they're kind of checked out anyway.
Well, you know, it's, it's one thing, one of the benefits for us right now with having our enrollment declining is that our teacher schedules are opening up. So for a number of years, our phys ed teachers were really maxed out.
Right, right, yeah.
They weren't able to teach more. So they did have elements of that. We do have the bikes that the students do ride throughout the town and whatnot, they do an orienteering component at some point. But Mr. Flanagan loves outdoor education and it would be awesome to incorporate that, so I'll certainly speak to him, yeah.
Even as an elective, it would be cool.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You got it.
Congratulations on your decrease.
Thank you very much. It's not as much as Ellen's, but it's better.
I wasn't gonna point that out. Ellen did.
Well, Ellen's, you know, the seasoned veteran, longtime administrator, and that's part of her career.
Now you have to present the one that there's an increase.
Yes, so...
Your buddy Flanagan really threw you a...
Mr. Flanagan does an increase and runs out of town, by the way. So, so, so... Yeah, he's at the Athletic Director Conference, so...
Yeah.
So overall increase for the, just the athletics budget is 3.36%. This is almost wholly due to the Section 11 cost of increase, overall 3%. One piece that's not on there is that the official fees have also raised by 6%. And then the other reasons for the increases are just the coaches' contractual increases as well as equipment. Mr. Drogon mentioned that, you know, all these things, prices are going up for everything. So even the equipment that we will purchase for our students to be able to participate, that they need to participate, those prices go up as well. Any questions? Paulette, Mrs. Frye's?
No, I'm gonna text Mr. Flanagan.
Oh, I love that.
And ask him why his increase is...
You should email him tonight, yes. All right, thank you, everyone.
Well, he's busy at his conference.
Next up is Dr. Simonetti.
Good, another decrease.
I'm seeing a pattern here.
Do I win?
Good thing you went for a decrease.
Hi, everyone. So pupil personnel services, it encompasses the, all of those departments, our mental health support team, our health offices, our E&amp;L program, our special ed programs, our guidance office. I don't know if you see that top line there, overall budget decrease in bold of 3.65%. The greatest driving factor in the PPS budget is typically students in out-of-district programs. And because we are able to maintain and offer the full continuum of programs and services here for our diverse learners, we, we consistently, over the past many years, have had only a couple of students in residential programs or in, like, day programs such as a BOSEs. So because of that, we are able to keep our budget down and actually decrease. Just to give you an idea of, of the trends that we're seeing, I attend a lot of directors' meetings in special ed and E&amp;L, mental health director, not directors, but coordinator meetings. And so the trends overall, and the trends that we're seeing in Southold are not unique to Southold, we're seeing them all throughout the region, Long Island, all of Long Island, Long Island through Queens, and New York State in general, we have a declining enrollment. We continue to see an increase in our English language learners, our cultural diversity, we have English language learners from different countries representing different languages that we've never seen before. You know, I've been here for 10 years and we have languages and cultures represented for the first time, which is really cool. We are also seeing quite an increase in students with disabilities across the board, across New York State. I think the state average has jumped up to about 19%, which is about where we're at. Specifically, students with autism spectrum disorders, and there's a lot of research going on now to see, you know, if that's, if that's a direct correlation to COVID, we're not sure. And just to point out that our students are thriving in so many various areas, thanks to the support of our community, of our Board of Education. We are able to offer so many different levels of services for our diverse learners, as I mentioned before, full continuum programs and services for our students with disabilities. We have programs that meet their, their social, emotional needs, their psychological needs, mental health needs, academic needs, behavioral needs. So we do a really great job with educating our children with all types of learning needs. Because of our collaboration with different mental health coalitions, we have definitely seen a decrease in referrals for crisis intervention. It's at the lowest point that it's been in the last eight years or so. And there continues to be an increased, I'm sorry, we have increased support and access for all of our academic and social, emotional needs in our counseling centers. Students can walk into the counseling center, they can talk about their, you know, social concerns with their friends, they can go in and, and talk about, you know, their scheduling for next year, college planning, resume writing, internships, so many different things. So it's like one-stop shopping in our counseling center and the students really, really love it. It's, it's been a great asset for our school, so.
It's important to, to point out that decrease referral for crisis intervention, ours has decreased, while mine has increased exponentially. Stony Brook just offered a closer through BOSEs for school districts to have access to direct crisis intervention referrals, rather than going through the whole process of having to go into CPAP and, and, you know, the process that you normally, like, we have in the past, we've had police officers drive our kids into CPAP, some police officers do the tip. Our, our numbers all over Long Island and New York State are increasing when it comes to those. Ours out here are actually going down over the last couple of years. And some of that has to do with the relationships that we have with different organizations to get them supports prior to needing that crisis intervention, you know. It's no different than, you know, eating healthier, you know. It allows you to keep your body healthier without it getting, you know, without getting really run down or sick or malnourished. It's no different with the mind, like, when we give access to some of these different groups and at least they can tell you who they are. Some of them ideally would be right here in South Fork, they're hot, sometimes they have to travel to Hop-on, sometimes they have to travel to Riverhead, but we have partnerships with different groups and coalitions, and they seem to really be working for our kids because our numbers when it comes to these major crises where a child has to be transported to frequently an inpatient type of facility, ours are going down, but ours are going up.
Yeah, it's interesting, too, because we're seeing all these new, like, collaborations pop up between mental health facilities and hospitals and school districts. Dr. Morrow mentioned Stony Brook, but Northwell is already on the bandwagon with that. We're seeing sites pop up in, like, satellite locations. I believe there's a Stony Brook site in, in Riverhead now, a Northwell one also, there's also one in Waynescott. And all of these have kind of been modeled off of the initiatives that was first started on the South Fork and then we kind of emulated on the North Fork. So districts all around have seen the need, seen how successful our collaborations have been, and so they're popping up all over, which is great for us because it just, you know, living, you know, being so far out here on the East End, it just builds up our, you know, pool of resources. So we, you know, we have our various collaborations and coalitions, as Dr. Morrow mentioned, and it, you know, it's, it provides a great deal of support and ongoing mental health support and crisis intervention for our students and their families. We just recently also connected with Youth Connect, and one of the great things that they do is they offer mental health support for our Spanish-speaking students, which is significant because we see a lot of students who, you know, come here from Central America with, you know, they, the way they get here, sometimes the stories are unbelievable and they experience great trauma along their journey. And so, you know, a lot of the students come here unaccompanied, with family members they didn't know before, or in other types of situations, just to escape the situations in their, in their native country. So to have this mental health support for our Spanish-speaking families and students is invaluable, so, yeah. Any questions? Of course.
Well, I feel kind of ignorant, I don't know what ASD stands for and I don't know what MTSS is.
Oh, I'm sorry. So ASD is autism spectrum disorder?
Okay, I thought it meant to do is that.
Yes. It used to be, they used, the classification used to be autism, now it's autism spectrum disorder, because it truly is a spectrum. Multi-tiered system of support and, multi-tiered system of supports is MTSS. So, you know, you have your level one instruction, which is all of your students, level two tiered instruction might be for smaller groups of students who need more intensive support, and then level three is, is much more intensive, might be like individual, one-on-one learning for students who really require a higher level of support. So like I mentioned before, we're able to offer all the different tiers of services, building level through special ed, just because of all the, the programs that we've built up and all the things that we do, all the trainings that we've done over the years. We've, we've done a lot of professional development, we've been very consistent in our approach and it's, it's, it's been really great.
The most supportive of those, we typically share, you know, like, our most supportive program in the high school, we share, we have multiple Greenport students that we tuition kids in, because we don't, you know, we don't necessarily have enough students that need that level of support in a small district like ours. Whereas it used to be, we would send three kids to BOSEs, approximately $100,000 a year we had in transportation and everything else. Now, we have a class with two adults in it, and we might have four students, and we might have three students tuitioned in from another district, you know. So, well, the fact that, and this was put in place probably by getting here, but the fact that we do offer that entire continuum, it allows our kids to be a better part of our community, which is really the number one asset that you get. We had a student on our baseball team last year who was in that class. And, you know, he was in uniform, he went to games, and he didn't play, but he still got to enjoy the company of the other players on the team, and it was a wonderful experience for him. You can't do that when you're riding a bus an hour to BOSEs because the closest place for beer is an hour. And it's not their fault, BOSEs is a wonderful organization, but, so we get to provide kids a real school-based experience, which they all should have an opportunity to. But the truth of the matter is, when you can house your own programs, it's significantly cheaper than it is.
And we have a great reputation for our programs. Like, this year, we acquired a new Shelter Island student at our elementary school because they didn't have a program to meet his needs, so Southold is definitely, has a great reputation.
But there's also some benefit to the fact that you have a student for three years or four years. You know, they might go to a great BOSEs program, but they, you know, the program might be leveled by year, and they might have a different group of adults in there with them every year, whereas our adult in the high school is with them for four years or six years.
Yeah.
You know, and it's, you know, there's benefits to that, too. So, and, I mean, you want, you want to visit with the most loving kids at the school, walk into that class, because they walk up and they hug you. They are the most loving, caring kids, they don't complain, they don't have any complaints about anything, they may not talk to you, and some of them are nonverbal, but then the others will walk up and they'll hug you. So it's a beautiful place to go, and it's nice to see them at school assemblies, it's nice to see them at sporting events, it's nice to see them at the different, you know, one of them dunked me this year, dunk tank, like, it's really, it's a wonderful opportunity for them. The fact that it comes at a cost savings is just a bonus, so.
Any other questions?
Would more, I have it to you, Dr. Morrow or Chuck? I don't want to get on, onto politics, but are you concerned about funding for your department being cut at the federal level?
I don't want to talk about politics either, but...
Or do we get, or do we get so little that it's not a concern for us?
So I can tell you that I was on the...
Yeah, we don't get a...
You can talk about the amount, but I can tell you that...
Yeah, our, our funding is like, I want to say it's under $200,000 a year.
I thought it was very little.
It, it concerns me on a global level, sure, for students with disabilities and what, how that affects. But locally, here in Southold... how that affects, but locally here in Southold, um, it, because of our responsible budgeting over the last few years and the support, I, I, I'm quite sure that our students will be okay.
Okay.
We don't, yeah, I don't think we'll, if it comes down to that, we wouldn't lose it, you know, if, we're talking a hundred and maybe seventy-five thousand dollars in funds, um, annually, that we, you know, it wouldn't be fun, but, uh, you know, it wouldn't be ideal, but we, we would survive.
We'd get through it, okay.
And our stu, our students would be okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, our programs would remain intact, I'm sure.
Okay.
The state has also, um, hinted at the fact that they've been told, uh, those funds for the neediest kids, the tighter funds, is what they're really talking about.
Right, I think we're, the federal funds or the IDEA, the, the students with disabilities, adults with disabilities, that, that's what I'm more concerned with, yeah.
I heard that today, uh, before executive board meetings, for Superintendent's, they told us that the message out of state ed was that the federal government has said to them that the, the neediest students, the grants for the neediest of students, uh, they do not expect to make...
Right. And that money is funded through the states to grants to us, like, when I access that money, I have to create a budget at the state education department, I don't submit it to the federal US Department of Education. So, I, I would hope that with the governor's budget, there's some provisions for that for, you know, ensuring that, um, you know, our students in New York are protected.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other question?
I do wanna thank the, uh, the administrators again, it's very, uh, easy working with them on the budget. Um, I do have to, quick note though, I, I apologize for not picking it up, but the, just so you know, the, the picture of the bus is not the one that we're replacing, but it's a, it's a similar bus.
But it's a minibus, not a full-size.
It's a, it's a small, the van bus. I don't think, I mean, I know we had problems, maybe we were certain things with the passing the inspection, but that one did pass, so it was the other one.
Did we, um, did we post last week's presentation yet?
We did.
Posted it on the website?
Yeah.
Okay. This one will be posted by the end of the week also. You know, last week's has a more detailed, um...
I think it's the next day.
Yeah, it's usually the next day, I just didn't check, so that's why I'm asking. So, you know, last week's has a more detailed, um, of the two budgets, the revenue and the, and the expense, um, for people to get a better view, um, you know, own view of what